Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the first Planning Board meeting of 2024. I'm Nancy Hafford, and welcome to the January 18th meeting that is now called to order. And we'll start our meeting with a roll call to account with our members that are present. Mr. Array, Ms. Brophy, Ms. German, Mr. Hayford, Mr. Heckman, Mr. Heinel, Mr. Halepka, Mr. Johnson, Mr. McGinnis, Mr. Pirlo, Ms. Panero, Mr. Warren, Ms. Wolfson. Thank you all. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Thank you. Board members, please remember about your mics. Turn them on if you're talking and off if you're not. Ms. Bensley, is there any changes to the agendas as published?
No changes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. On the January 11th email, you received draft minutes from the January 4th meeting. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes? Are there any corrections or changes you'd like to make? Hearing none, can I entertain a motion to accept the minutes as circulated? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. I see the county executive is not here yet. We want to start. Should we go to switch this? We can do the... We can cut him off. We can cut you off. Just letting you know, Mr. Hill. Next on your agenda that we might cut off is the proposed annual revisions to the basic service map. Mr. Justin Hall and staff from the Department of Public Works and Transportation are here with us this evening to present the basic service maps to the board. Mr. Hall.
My name is Justin Hall. I am the Chief of Design for Engineering and Construction, and I am here to introduce the 2024 graph Basic Service Maps for Public Water Sewer and Transportation Systems. The basis services maps are part of the countywide master plan standards and guidelines. These maps are updated annually for the county zoning regulations and include areas that are deficient in public water sewer transportation. To recap on last year's basic services. On June 1st, 2023, Bill 19-23 was signed and enacted by the Baltimore County Council, adopting the revised maps for 2023. For this year's basic services maps, there are no deficiencies in the public water systems as defined by zoning regulations. The sewer section reports one deficient area, which is the Richland Manor area. This is the same that was reported last year. The transportation section reports 11 deficient intersections. Compared to last year, one intersection change from a level of service of F to C. Therefore, it was removed from the 2024 Basic Service Map for Transportation. As you may recall, deficiencies are defined for each basic service. A deficiency in the water system is determined by a failing fire flow test that measures the residual water pressure at the nearest public fire hydrant. A deficiency in the public sewer system is determined by a lack of capacity to convey sewage flows. And finally, a deficiency in the transportation system is determined by a lack of capacity to provide a standard level of service within arterial and arterial collector intersections. Level of service designations of E and F are considered to be deficient for transportation. So to conclude, we would like to request a public hearing for the 2024 Basic Services Maps. Thank you. One that has changed from an F to a C, do we?
It's your work in Ridgely.
Do you want me to... That's your work in Ridgely. Yeah, we can look into that, and I can get back to you with that info for the next one.
Do you move that the Baltimore County Planning Board set a virtual public hearing is specified under BCZR Section 4A 023E1 for Thursday, February 1st, 2024, 4:30 p.m. for the board to receive comments and concerns about the... from citizens of Baltimore County on the 2024 Basic Services Map?
Well, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. How are you today? Good. Thank you for the opportunity to join you. It is my pleasure to be with you. I want to thank each of you for your service and for the opportunity to speak about the kickoff of our upcoming fiscal '25 capital budget and the fiscal '26 through '30 CIP program. It's pretty incredible when we think back to six years ago when I first had the opportunity to stand before this board and the incredible progress that we've made together, both challenges known and unknown, including the inherited $81 million deficit that was buried in budget footnote to a global pandemic, things that we never expected. But together, we've ushered in a new generation of equitable leadership, putting forward 21st century solutions into every neighborhood and making investments everywhere. Consequently, we have comprehensively closed that deficit. We've made record investments each and every year. We've brought our government into the 21st century, and we are responding to the concerns that our residents are hearing and sharing with us collectively. We continue to be recognized for our fiscal stewardship with a AAA bond rating, a triple AAA bond rating, and we continue to deliver on the promise, again, in spite of a once-in-a-generation pandemic. Very proud of the ways in which our department heads and leaders came together to thoughtfully and strategically leverage federal funding, whether that was the CARES or American Rescue Plan funding, addressing those longstanding inequities. What the pandemic has proven to us is that we can't just recover to where we were. We have to really aspire to where we should have always been, addressing some of those longstanding inequities that were laid bare through the pandemic. We have begun to, and we are continuing to responsibly deploy those funds with the support of some general fund dollars and other outside sources. However, we want to be clear. As we enter this process, we are entering a new season. And I think if you've watched the news, the governor has been pretty clear-eyed. It is for the state, and I think the budget that was recently released by Governor Moore is indicative of that. It is a season of discipline. It is a season of restraint. And as the governor said at a recent conference, when the state catches the cold, local government catches the flu. So we want to look forward in being honest with you as our partner. We want to be honest with residents of Baltimore County about the constraints we will face together. But I am confident that we will continue to make the important investments that are necessary to move us forward while being fiscally responsible. A lot of what's driving our challenges are not just limited state support as they tackle their own budget shortfalls around transportation with their own structural deficit. But in addition to that, we are also facing rising costs through inflation and supply chain challenges. We are seeing the ending of those federal dollars, especially ARPA. But that doesn't mean we can't keep doing those things, and so we're going to meet those obstacles together. And we're proud that our current fiscal '24 budget continues our progress, committing to fundamentally transforming us for the better. That starts with education, including a record $71 million over the required maintenance of effort, as well as $210 million in capital spending. Projects of note within the new capital spending for schools include nearly $82 million for new or like-new schools at Lansdowne, Towson, and Delaney High Schools. Promises we were proud to be able to meet and honor. Over $8 million to address overcrowding for a new CTE school and for solutions and renovations and improvements to the tune of $114 million throughout the county. We have invested in our transportation options, launching and growing the Towson Loop back in October of 2021. Since its inception, we have now served over 100,000 residents. We are also committed to enhancing and expanding safe bike and ped infrastructure through the release of the county's first-ever countywide comprehensive bike and ped plan with recommendations to assist in planning for more than over 450 miles of traveling. We continue to ensure that our communities have the resources they need in places like our library with over $30 million invested there, including $24 million for the renovation and expansion of the Woodlawn Lansdowne and Ranlestown libraries, as well as $6 million towards the Essex Library. We are designated over $30 million in the fiscal '24 budget to support public safety needs, including more than $18 million for the Catonsville and Sparrow Point fire stations, over $4 million towards the Essex Police Precinct, and $1 million just in support of our county 911 center. In addition, we put $7 million in this year's budget to allow for county-based patrol officers to bring their vehicles home. And in the interest of continuing to improve every community, we've continued to fund Operation Retree, which is an equity-based tree planting initiative, fundamentally shifting and adjusting our approach to reforestation. We have... In this program alone, we have planted nearly 2,600 trees in 18 different neighborhoods with the goal of planting 4,500 trees by fall of 2025. We've also started a street tree program, including what you see here in Towson, with over 1,000 urban trees being replaced each and every year. We've dedicated more than $63 million to enhance and expand our recreational opportunities across Baltimore County, including funding for a new disc golf course and splash pad over at Northwest Regional. The disc golf course will be a Dave's Code, as well as significant funding for renovations at Holt Park, Oregon Ridge, Cromwell Valley, and Cloverland Parks, again, making investments across county. We've broken ground on the $25 million Sparrow Point Park, the Hazelwood Skateboard Park for $4.3 million, and the $1.5 million Meadow Creek Park. We've also continued to listen and serve our seniors, including funding for the expansion of the Woodlawn Senior Center, money towards the Jacksonville Senior Center, and continued progress at a new North County Senior Center that connects our rural residents with community anchors to enhance their quality of life. We are continuing to take steps and make investments at other anchors like Security Square Mall and the Pikesville Armory, where residents have been vocal and advocating for vibrant new community spaces. We've matched $5 million in state funding for the ongoing community-driven revitalization of the areas surrounding Security Square. We're excited to continue this partnership with state and local leaders. At the end of August, Maryland's BPW approved the county's commitment to pass along ownership of the Pikesville Armory. We're proud to say we've secured over $15 million, including $3 million in funding this last year's budget to support those efforts to transform that into a community hub. We now have a new community improvement program with an initial $1.5 million in funding and recognizing the tremendous impact of those who serve us. We spent over $6 million to transform the jury selection room in our courthouse. I'm very proud of the work we've accomplished. I look forward to working in partnership with all of you to continue building that better Baltimore County for all. Later this month, we'll be launching our sixth Signature Town Hall series, where we will be inviting in the public to both hear our current status about what we have done in every community, some of the fiscal challenges that are ahead, but also to invite their feedback. Last year, Baltimore County's departments appeared before you to discuss their capital needs, identify planned projects for the future, and innovate new ways to build sustainability and resilience into their projects. As the experienced members of the board are aware, this is an on-year cycle in our biennial capital budget process, beginning tonight and ending with the county council approval in May to determine our referendum. We expect that nearly $334 million in bond referendum will be put before the voters this year that our department has... will detail how to spend those dollars. In our first five years, we provided record funding for public education and over $780 million in shovel-ready school construction projects because we believe every child and family deserves a safe, modern, supportive learning environment. That includes the multi-year improvement plan for all schools, where we have a roadmap to continue investing over $3 billion by 2037. With sustained state partnership and continued local investment, we are well on our way to achieving that goal. We continue to comprehensively fund needs to expand pre-K, invest in safety infrastructure, improve our older schools, and improve those learning environments. As before, department heads will again be coming to talk about their upcoming projects and priorities. But again, I just want to reinforce that rising costs, constraints on the economy, and limited capital funds will force us to be pragmatic when we lay out our next budget. In short, we're going to be much more focused and intentional about each and every one of our capital investments. We know that without new resources, we will have to delay some initiatives and pace out existing projects in order to sustain the historic investments we've made. For me, that means matching up our budget cycles with our construction cycles so the dollars are going when they are absolutely shovel-ready. As vital partners, I want to make sure the Planning Board is aware of this challenge in front of us so that we can work together to overcome it, just as we have before. We'll have more specific details in the weeks ahead at our annual Budget Town Hall, but we hope to engage with all of you and our community members there. I know that you have a robust schedule of capital budget hearings with county department heads and leadership from CCBC and BCPS. So I look forward to hearing your recommendations on the fiscal '25 capital budget and the '26 through '30 capital improvement program. I want to thank the members of the board for your time and your energy. Your work here certainly helps us chart a brighter future for all of Baltimore County. On behalf of our residents, I'm grateful for your willingness to serve, and I thank you for the opportunity to address you this afternoon, almost evening, and appreciate your commitment to the residents of Baltimore County. Thank you again, Madam Chair, for your outstanding leadership, and to each and every one of you for your service on this board. Together, we will continue moving our county forward. Thank you.
I want to thank you for the effort and help in establishing a Department of Agriculture out at the Ag Center on Swan Road. This will be covering issues involved in a large segment of our county, which is preserved, permanently preserved for agriculture, as well as areas for conservation and other uses. The other thing I wish to... Since I know you have a background in basketball, both locally, as I do, vote locally, and statewide, I know you're interested in facilities to help our young people. After school is very important for our young people, what they have to do. Now, of course, Hereford is a little town way north here somewhere, out in the Boondocks, and you think there's not... You don't have to worry about them. Well, the kids out there need things to do after school like everybody else. And in the last 40 years, there had been no expansion of the athletic facilities, indoor athletic facilities at Hereford High School. Now, in that time, they were one of the top schools in the state in individual and team state championships. So in that... In developing that, there's a lot of need for space and year-round space up there. That gym is the same size it was 40 years ago. Now, the Planning Board has recommended for the last seven years that budget be made or that money be set aside for the development and expansion of that athletic facility. But we haven't had any results from that. And I know you feel the importance that these young men and women have an opportunity to play, and an opportunity to expand and move on in their career. And I just would urge you to think about that in the future of committing some toward that end. So again, I thank you for your help with agriculture. I know your experience in handling cattle is probably limited, but we do appreciate your efforts.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis, and I appreciate your consistent and persistent advocacy on behalf of North County residents, particularly in Hereford. I will again reiterate that we were intentional in designing the North County senior space. We brought rec and parks to the table. And so we will be designing and building and funding a new athletic basketball facility in addition to the senior center. So it will not just be a senior facility, but will also be a community space for our young people and for our residents in northern Baltimore County, in Hereford specifically. But I appreciate your continued advocacy and support of us doing that.
Mr. Array.
I just want to say thank you very much. I think Baltimore County is the best county.
Me too.
And thank you for your leadership. You are very good in what you do. And your Department of Transportation, they are very efficient. Director, thank you. Red House Run Elementary is down there. And Madam Director, you say you are going to be doing the Wabon Road. New school, new road. So we thank you guys for everything you do.
Thank you very much. I mentioned our department heads. I'm very proud of them. Not only are they the best in the business, they are passionate about the communities we serve. One of the best things we've done is we've started taking our cabinet meetings in the community firsthand, some of the projects that we're doing and some of the areas that we need to do more in, frankly. But I'm very proud of our team. They do great work. I'm lucky to have them alongside us, so thank you very much.
Any other comments from the board? If not, thank you so much for taking the time to meet with us.
Thank you, and I'm off to assistant coach duty for U10 girls soccer. Appreciate it. So thank you, guys.
Okay. Now, Ms. Bensley will fill us in on the major actions of the January 11th, 2024 Landmark Preservation Commission meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At their January 11th, 2024 meeting, the Landmarks Preservation Commission voted to issue five certificates of appropriateness to the following properties. The Morrison-Zahn property located at 319 Malinkton Avenue in Lutherville. The Smith property located at 502 Upland Road in Pikesville. The Birch property located at 1725 Arlington Avenue in Relay. The Carpenter property located at 211B West Seminary Avenue in Lutherville. And the McMillan property located at 5167 Viaduct Avenue in Relay. And that concludes the report.
Thank you so much. Well, this is the conclusion of our agenda. As a reminder, the Planning Board will hold a CIP subcommittee meeting at 5:30. It'll all be in the same room. Do I have a motion to adjourn the board meeting? Second? All in favor? Thank you, and we'll see you all in a half hour.
Madam Chair, I'd remind the board members...
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nancy Hafford, and I'm filling in for Scott Halepka, the Chair of the Planning Board Subcommittee on the Capital Improvement Budget Program. He's a little under the weather tonight. I would like to start the committee meeting by introducing our board members that are present. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Array, Ms. Brophy.
Aye.
Ms. German.
Aye.
Mr. Hayford, Mr. Heckman.
Aye.
Mr. Heinel, Mr. Hinton.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis.
Aye.
Mr. Pirlo, Ms. Panero, Mr. Warren.
Aye.
And Ms. Wolfson.
Aye.
Thank you all. Tonight, we are meeting in a work session to hear from Ms. DeAndrea Walker, Director of Baltimore County Department of Public Works and Transportation. After the presentation, members of the committee will have an opportunity to ask questions. Before Ms. Walker begins her presentation, I want to note that there are members of the community in attendance for tonight's meeting. This meeting is not designated to accept comments from citizens. The Planning Board held a citizen input meeting on October 19th, 2023, which was an opportunity from the board to hear from citizens and their issues concerning the capital improvement program. I would now like to welcome Ms. DeAndrea Walker, Department of Public Works and Transportation.
Madam Chair, before Director Walker begins, if I may, first of all, Happy New Year to everybody and welcome back. But secondly, we have with us tonight Deputy Director of Office of Budget and Management, Matt Carpenter, and of course, a number of members of the planning department's staff who will be working on these various capital budget issues as we go through the public hearings. So certainly, if there are questions about the budgets that get presented to you, feel free to reach out to us as we proceed. So just thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lafferty.
I didn't have on the right glasses. I'm sorry. So good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Board. I'm DeAndrea Walker, the Director for Public Works and Transportation here in Baltimore County. Before we get started, I would like to let you know that I do have multiple members of my staff here in the audience so that afterwards, if there's questions, I will probably call on one of those deputies to help me with some of those questions. So I just want to let you all know that before we actually get started. I am pleased to address you today, presenting our proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year. As we convene, our department is undergoing a dynamic phase of expansion and transformation, charting a course for the future with ambitious goals. As a multifaceted department, our responsibility encompasses many things: transportation, highways, utilities, solid waste, as well as engineering. In response to the ever-evolving landscape here in Baltimore County, we are embracing a more data-driven practice to enhance our decision-making processes. The strategic shift towards leveraging data will enable us to optimize our services, improve efficiency, and better address the needs of Baltimore County residents. Our mission remains steadfast, to build a better Baltimore County through strategic investments in public works and transportation, sustainable practices, exceptional customer service, and the integration of data-driven approaches as we press forward adapting to the evolving needs of our county. We are constantly mindful of our purpose and our pledge to the residents of Baltimore County. I want to point out for you several noteworthy things and milestones that we've done over the last year. In our Bureau of Solid Waste, we've made several remarkable strides in our solid waste management initiatives to further enhance our ongoing commitment to environmental stewardship and community well-being. It should be noted that the county serves approximately 243,000 single-family homes and 82,000 multifamily units with once-a-week trash and once-a-week recycling pickup. In calendar year 2022, 600,000 tons of municipal solid waste was transferred through three of our Baltimore County transfer stations. Our materials... Our materials recovery facility processes seventy-five thousand tons per year of recyclables, and the county collected seven million in revenue from sales of our recyclables in twenty twenty-two. We've taken a significant step forward with our cart pilot program, providing trash carts to over thirty thousand homes in our second collection areas. This innovative pilot is currently underway. In Phase One, which was forty-three hundred homes, we invested three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. In Phase Two, which was thirty thousand homes, we've invested one point nine million. To ensure the continuation of our successful bulk trash collection program, we've invested nearly nine hundred thousand dollars. And that program is available twice a year for county single-family and town homes. It's important to note that county services approximately ten thousand homes per week as it relates to our bulk trash program. Recognizing the growing challenges of electronic waste, we are proud to announce the expansion of our electronics recycling capabilities as well. From initially accepting thirty items, we have now expanded the list to over sixty, including televisions and computer monitors, ensuring that we keep pace with the evolving landscape of technology while prioritizing responsible disposal. With our efforts of expanding our recycling program, we've started the process of hiring a consultant to evaluate our existing material recovery facility and the county's recycling operation. The proposed cost in our current capital budget is two hundred thousand dollars. The current MRF, as we call it, is in Cockeysville and is rapidly reaching the end of its lifespan and was specifically called out for replacement as part of our solid waste work group in twenty twenty-one. Additionally, it should be noted that the MRF is undersized for the amount of material currently being collected and processed through our residential recycling programs. The study that I referenced a few minutes ago will evaluate the current system and provide recommendations for how to handle our recycling into the future. Now, let's talk a little bit about our Bureau of Highways. We have exciting developments in our highway management strategies, particularly when our commitment to proactive practices and the implementation of our new pavement management system. Most folks don't know that for many years, we did not do preventive maintenance as it related to our roads. However, in our relentless pursuit of efficiency and sustainability, we are transitioning from a reactive practice to a proactive approach, aiming to extend the life cycle of our roads. Through the innovative pavement management system, the Bureau of Highways is embracing another data-driven solution to comprehensively understand the conditions of our roads and our streets countywide. Pavement management is not just a concept. It is a tangible objective tool that employs a pavement condition index, which rates our county roads on a scale from zero to one hundred. This numerical value is a reflection of our roads' health. It should be noted that over the last year, we have spent time surveying every one of our over eight thousand-plus roads here in the county. In our early review of that data, all indications show us that in order to bring every road up to average condition here in Baltimore County, we would need four hundred million dollars. I point that out specifically because repaving roads has been one of the main priorities that residents has asked us for. Four hundred million dollars is a lot of money in the budget. And I would be remiss if I didn't tell you that we have twenty-two million dollars to repave roads. So our new pavement management system is a nationally recognized system that we spend a lot of time researching and trying to make sure that we can be equitable and transparent in the way we decide to move about maintaining our roads. So that, that's a little bit of that. I've had an opportunity to brief the council members on the new pavement system. We will start using that new pavement system this new paving season as we come up. Things will be a little bit different as we start to look at the roads, because it will be equitable. At one time, when we did our roads and decided on that twenty-two million and how much we were going to split, we tend to try to split the money amongst each district. That wasn't necessarily equitable. All of our roads are different depending on how many trucks are riding, riding down the road, how many cars are riding down the road. This management system gives us the ability to look from an equitable, equitable basis and be fair and strategic and very thoughtful about where we are putting our money as it relates to our roads. It also allows us to bring in the preventive maintenance program, which we had not done before. We would just tear up the road and repave it. Now we'll start to use crack seal, we'll start to use other methods to maintain the roads for even longer. So all that to say, we're going into a new era with the pavement management system and how we deal with our roads here in Baltimore County. So I'll move on to our Bureau of Utilities. Sewers are the largest capital requirement for DPWNT. We maintain more than three thousand miles of sewer lines buried under our streets and along waterways and a hundred and twenty pumping stations that feed into them. Under the twenty-two thousand five federal consent decree, Baltimore County will be investing more than one point five billion to ensure the improvement of the system and eliminate sewer overflows. I am pleased to share significant achievements in our Utilities Bureau, showcasing our commitment to public safety, environmental responsibility, and financial accountability. Throughout twenty twenty-three, the Bureau of Utilities Pumping and Treatment Division has consistently shown a forward-thinking and proactive approach. Tasked with the upkeep and operational duties of approximately twenty-six hundred sewer grinder pumps, as mandated by the Health Department in response to the septic system failures, the division has played a pivotal role by operating and maintaining these systems and conducting any necessary repairs. So not only did they ensure the smooth functioning and repair of these critical systems, but they also field two hundred and sixty calls from community members regarding their pumps. Their quick handling led to the on-site repair of thirty-three pumps, with the remaining two hundred and twenty-seven needing full replacements. Impressively, the division's innovative methods led to the restoration of a hundred and ninety-four pumps, which resulted in significant financial benefits for this county, saving us about a half a million dollars by eliminating the need for new pumps. In a vital initiative, the Bureau collaborated with the Department of Health to address a pressing issue in downtown Baltimore and downtown Towson, the buildup of grease deposits in county maintained post-COVID mains. Approximately thirty high-risk fog generators were jointly selected for inspection, leading to a substantial grease inspection of food services site here in Towson. The thorough sweep resulted in a notable improvement in grease buildup in the downtown Towson area. And we've continued to have ongoing inspections that have been scheduled so that we can continue to monitor and address any potential issues before they escalate into backups. Concurrently, the Pipeline Maintenance Division showed us the responsibility of both emergency response and the preventive maintenance and the cleaning program for our sewer system. Proactively addressing potential issues, the division cleaned sixteen hundred pipe segments throughout this past year. This proactive cleaning initiative has proven effective in eliminating blockages, preventing backups, and averting sewer overflows. Simultaneously, we also have our Construction Division that is up under Utilities. And they take the lead in managing small and medium-sized repairs for both sewer and storm drain systems. Impressively, this division completed four hundred and eighty-nine sewer repairs and five hundred and eighty-six storm drain repairs during this past year. These repairs encompass various components, including inlets, manholes, pipes, outfalls, connections, and other critical infrastructure parts. The division's commitment to comprehensive repairs underscores its dedication to maintaining the functionality and the reliability of the sewer and the storm drain infrastructure that we have here in Baltimore County. Our current capital budget for this section specifically is one million biannually. It's important to note that these achievements underscore the commitment that we have for public safety and our environmental stewardship for Baltimore County. Now, we'll talk a little bit about our metro area. I'm excited to share some of the significant updates that our metro operations and other key initiatives within our jurisdiction have had. Beginning with our Operations Department under Metro, our dedicated efforts and strategic expansion have geared substantial results. The metro fine net revenues have seen a remarkable increase of approximately twenty-one million from last year and twelve million from two years ago. This is a testament to our ongoing work and the county's growth. Notably, our metro customer service has demonstrated commendable performance with ticket counts decreasing by thirty-four percent in FY twenty-three compared to its previous year. This positive trend is continuing in FY twenty-five, and it underscores the stability and efficiency within our metro customer service and field operations. Shifting from the focus on metro operations, I want to talk a little bit about the Water Governance Task Force. I know the last two years that I've been before you all, there's been questions about water and how we manage our, our water bills and our relationship with Baltimore City. The county executive has been steadfast on helping to put a Water Governance Task Force together and advocating for a Water, Water Governance Task Force. Our deputy, Lauren Buckler, sits on the Water Governance Task Force. They will be coming out with some recommendations by the end of this month on where we move forward with the Water Governance Task Force. I, I want to say that it's very important to us that we start to get to a relationship with Baltimore City where it's a partnership, and it's a strong partnership. We hear you and our residents loud and clear that we need the responsiveness from Baltimore City that we, as Baltimore County residents, deserve. And we think that moving us towards a governance, a new governance structure, because we have agreements that are back from nineteen sixty-two, that we can start to move us residents in Baltimore County forward in terms of the attention that we need as it relates to our water bills and how we are managing our water. So I just wanted to make sure that we knew that we were steadfast and committed to our Water Governance Task Force and look for a report from them at the end of this month. We've had many public meetings as it relates to the Water Task Force. I believe that there is a lot of back and forth about what Baltimore City does versus what Baltimore County does and the connection between the, the water pipes that we have and where, you know, we stand. But the one thing that's most important is that times have shifted from nineteen sixty-two. Back then, Baltimore City was much larger than Baltimore County. Baltimore County has outgrown the pace of Baltimore City, but we're in a little query because we don't own the infrastructure. So we're committed to the Water Governance Task Force, and we're making it known that we deserve a certain amount of customer service as it relates to the water, and this Water Governance Task Force is the start of that process. All right, so I'll move on to transportation and beginning with our traffic calming. In our FY twenty-four budget, we were given one point two million to enhance school pedestrian safety crossings here in the county. Systematically assessing the needs of every public school, we devised plans to install raised crosswalks or raised intersections strategically. This initiative, this initiative aims to create safer crossings for children by slowing down traffic. From July to December, we successfully constructed thirty-three raised crosswalks and three raised intersections, with eight projects still in progress. In the rim of traffic enhancements, the Honeycomb Boulevard Crossroad Roundabout is proceeding to a sixty percent design, which should be completed by early summer. Final design and land acquisition are anticipated to be done by the spring of twenty twenty-five, with construction to begin shortly afterwards and take about twelve to fifteen months to complete. This project is fully funded at two point five million for design and construction under our traffic calming program. It's important to note, this will be one of the largest roundabouts that we have in Baltimore County. So we're being very intentional about the design associated with it and about the enhancements that it will take to get this roundabout built. I know that, that the councilmen would like for us to move faster, but faster does not mean better. We need to be safe, and we're keeping safety as a party as we, as we move about building this roundabout. Another project we've taken in on transportation is our Complete Streets Initiative. Our first project is a concept development for Old Court Road, and that will span from Liberty Road, Maryland twenty-six, to Rice's Town Road, Maryland one forty-six. We have one million placed in our capital budget for this project specifically. This concept will cover approximately three point three miles and will be developed in consistency with our recommendations for our comprehensive complete streets policy. Surprisingly enough, we had our complete streets policy that was adopted back in twenty thirteen. However, we had not done a complete street project here in Baltimore County. So this is our first major complete street Baltimore project here in the county. This project will include, will be divided into two phases. The current phase focuses on alternative analysis and concept study, while the future phase will address preliminary and final design services. And looking ahead, as you all know, our bike and pedestrian master plan came before you all. We are internally grateful for you all, for your feedback on the bike and pad master plan. We are moving forward with that strategic vision, and in our budget for FY twenty-five, we have requested four million to start implementation of some of the recommendations in that bike and pad master plan. All right, lastly, we'll move on to engineer, engineering. We've been very busy in engineering. We've reviewed fifty-eight development plans. We had eighty-nine active design projects going on. We've advertised thirty construction contracts. It's also important to note that there were over eight miles of new, new sewer mains installed this past year. Almost twenty-four miles of sewer mains were rehabilitated this past year, and over three miles of new water mains were installed. In addition, we had twelve active sewage pumping stations improvement projects going on, and there were a hundred and forty-three development projects inspected. Finally, I want to talk about the health of our sewer sheds and the critical decisions made around development in our sewer sheds. First, I want to talk about the basic services map. As you know, our basic services map for this year was just introduced earlier today. Our basic services map, as a, we use it as a critical tool in our urban planning and infrastructure. Our basic services map as a criti- we use it as a critical tool in our urban planning and infrastructure management. These maps highlight two critical areas, areas of special concern and deficit areas. In areas of special concern, we monitor sewer capacities closely due to increasing volumes. This scrutiny is vital for any development or change in property use, serving as a precautionary signal for potential developers. Deficit areas, on the other hand, are those where wastewater flows exceeds eighty percent of a treatment plant's capacity. This eighty percent is an MDE threshold of, of concern. It is significant to note that these maps are unique to our county and are not mandated by the state, but are required according to Baltimore County Code. I like to place emphasis on the basic services map being invaluable to DPWNT's urban planning and infrastructure management. Moving on to the triennial report, which is mandated by the Environmental Article of Annotate, Annotated Code of Maryland, Section nine dash five oh three. This requires us to adopt a comprehensive plan for water supply and sewages, aligned with the county's land use plan and requires review every three years. This is more than a statutory obligation. It's a commitment to sustainable development with potential state funding implications for non-compliance. We introduced the triennial report to this body, and it has since been approved by county council and is currently being reviewed by the Maryland State Department of Environment. We also have the mechanism for amendments to the water and the sewer master plan maps, which is governed by the Executive Order of April eleventh, nineteen ninety. This process allows property owners on private wells, wells and septic systems to petition for changes in water and sewer land use designations. It's a pivotal step for ensuring future service connections to public water and sewer, aligning private development with public infrastructure. Definitions matter. In our fill, definitions are critical. They include structural condition, referring to the physical state of our pipes, and capacity, which is the volume these pipes can hold. Another key term is pipe rehabilitation, a cost-effective method to enhance pipe longevity and prevent rainwater infiltration, thus increasing sewer capacity without enlarging the pipes themselves. As far as development proposals, each one undergoes thorough scrutiny by DPWNT through various engineering groups, including sewer, water, highways, stormwater, and traffic. The Development Plans Review Section of the Department of Permits, Approvals, and Inspections coordinates these reviews. Our weekly meetings with PAI ensure that major development issues receive the attention they deserve. Specifically, regarding the Jones Falls Sewer Shed, it is essential to emphasize that we've invested twenty-eight million since twenty thirteen. These funds have been used for relining pipes, replacing valves, conducting smoke and di testing, and installing new pipes. Our goal is to reduce rainwater infiltration and expand sewer capacity. Revisiting the consent decree, we spent seven hundred and ninety-five million to date, addressing the critical issue of overflow structures in our sewage system. An additional six hundred million is projected for these projects already accounted for in our six-year CIP and prior authorized funding. It should be highlighted that of the forty-four overflow structures, we've closed thirty-four and are actively working on six, with the remaining four under review. These achievements exemplify our commitment to infrastructure and maintaining a healthy sewer system. In conclusion, our unwavering commitment to building a better Baltimore County is firm in our mission and our dedication. We remain committed to maintaining the integrity of our infrastructure and ensuring its resilience to evolving challenges. I sincerely appreciate you all taking time to hear from us today and appreciate your support. Thank you so much.
Walker, thank you for your presentation today. Um, I just have a, maybe some be clarified. Um, in the Bureau of Highways that you mentioned, you say your current budget is eleven million dollars.
Just for repaving.
Just for repaving. So where is the four hundred million dollars? That's, that's, the four hundred million dollars is for the estimated cost for repaving?
Right. So one of the things that this system was able to tell us, because we went out, previously what we would do is, um, in our highway shops, we'd have the superintendents go out and take a bird's eye view of the road. So you'd get fifteen, twenty different ideas about if that road is average, fair, or in good condition. Um, so this new system allows us to use a, a equitable process where we actually had a truck to go out and look at all the roads, look at the, the depth of the pavement, um, the cracks in the pavement and things of that sort. The overview of the report that I got from that data told me where my roads fell. Did, uh, fifteen percent fall in great condition? Did twenty percent fall in average condition? Did twenty-five percent fall in fair condition? So what we would like is for all of our roads to be in average, in average condition, right? So below average condition are those roads. To bring those roads that failed up to average condition, I would need four hundred million dollars.
Did your, um, survey or the survey that you did, does it tell you what areas of the county have, um, these roads, the, the roads that are failing? I mean, are there some areas in the county that have worse roads than others?
Yes.
Okay, so when you say equitable, are those areas that have the worst roads going to get more money?
No. So what we're going to do is, the plan, what the plan does is it, again, it breaks down all the roads in different categories for me. Because I can't, I can't bring every road up to average. What I'm going to do is take a, a, a slice of each segment and work on a slice of each segment. Those roads that are, the worst roads will get the attention first. So I have four different categories, I believe it is. So let's say twenty percent of those roads are failing. I'm going to focus on those, those failing roads, the worst roads, maybe ten percent of those roads to repair those. So I'm going to do a slice of each segment of the PCI pie.
So if Essex, for example, has the majority of the bad roads, you're going to, Essex is going to get the most because you're going to fix those roads, or you're going to get part of those roads and then take other money and go to other areas?
It's a sprinkle all over there. I mean, you have some very bad roads on this side of town, some very bad roads. It's not all the roads on one side of town that are bad.
That's what I'm trying to get.
Yeah, no, no, no. It's not all the road, because we've, we've gone across all of the county and tried to get the worst first. But we've done it from a bird's eye view, not necessarily with data. So we're going to focus on all of the roads, but that's where the preventive maintenance come into play. So those roads that are failing, we may be able to do some preventive maintenance, we may be able to do some crack seal, we may be able to do some slurry to get it, um, into fair condition before it's like a horrible road and nobody can ride on it.
I'm just concerned, I just want to make sure that everybody gets a piece, all of the county. And I, and I'm, I'm not saying that there wouldn't be, but I just want to be concerned. I just want to make sure that the data used and we're spreading it out. I mean, I just want to make sure that everybody's taken care of, is those roads that are bad, that they get, they, they get the, um, monies that they need, regardless if another part has roads that are bad. But if this side has worse roads, I just think this side should be taken care of because the roads are worse on this side than this side.
So that is going to be the challenge associated with this budget and as we go on through these years. And that's why we need to integrate preventive maintenance into, so that we can, uh, do some preventive maintenance to make those that are okay last just a little bit longer until we can get to them.
But going from eleven to four hundred is, is really a big jump.
Well, I think it, I think it's important for us to tell you all that, you know, and I said this to the council and I said it to the county executive. Everybody wants that beautiful road. If everybody wants it, I need four hundred million dollars to get it there.
And I understand that going from eleven to four hundred is, is a big jump. It really is.
Yeah. And, and you, you know, you kind of heard the county executive talk about, um, the state. We get HUR funds, we get, uh, and, and that is even dwelling. I was, I was before the appropriations committee, um, in Annapolis earlier this week because they're talking about cutting those funds. Those funds that they cut are funds that we use to repair these roads. They started cutting those funds in, in two thousand and eight. Had we continued with the level of HUR funds that we were getting initially, that would have covered that four hundred million. So, you know, it's only, I hate to say, but it's going to get worse before it gets better. But in, in talking about being equitable, we are also going to be transparent. When the council calls me, I'm going to send the picture, I'm going to tell you what the rating is. And in some instances, we're not going to be able to do everything, so we're going to have to make a decision.
Thank you, Ms. Walker.
So, um, uh, thank you for all the information. It is really good. So going off of what Mr. Johnson said about the, uh, equity or being equitable, I guess at the current budget, what would your capacity be to work on those, um, like, how many projects could you handle at one time versus if you got what you needed? Because I think when you're talking about being equitable, if people see, okay, we're only working here for a year to get to there, then people start to feel a certain type of way. But I think if you could do, you know, three, four, five projects at a time, people, they, they lower their guard a little bit. Does that make sense?
It, it does make a lot of sense. And, and I'm glad you brought that point up because there's only so much work you can do in a year, right? There's only so many contracts that I could put on the street. Because we, DPWNT don't actually do the repaving, right? We actually have to do a contract in order to bring that contractor out. So I could probably do, you know, with a contract, I could probably do fifteen million more, but it's only so much they can do in a year. You know, in terms of pavement and in the time period in which we have to do pavement because of the weather. So we will reevaluate every three years to see if the improvements that we put into it are making an impact. Yeah.
Any other questions? Ms. Brophy.
Thank you for the presentation. Um, so a quick question, going to the, uh, materials recycling facility that you mentioned, the MRF. So you said it was undersized to begin with and we're nearly at capacity. So is there money in the CIP to, I guess, study or decide where the next facility would be? Because I know the planning board, we heard a presentation about solid waste too, right? Some of the landfills, they're getting filled, they're going to be filled by a certain time. So I'm just kind of wondering how that fits into this.
Yes. So that two hundred thousand that I was saying, I've been kicking down walls about. I need to do a feasibility study to figure out where we go because we're bursting at the seams. For the Christmas holiday, with, with, I won't just say for the Christmas, for the holiday, for November, December, you know, people get all these Amazon boxes, right? We had stuff everywhere, everywhere that I thought we would possibly be sighted because, you know, you had people working overtime trying to get all of the materials up off the floor. So that two hundred thousand dollars that I talked about is money to do a feasibility study to see where we can go, what the next size should be and things such as that. So that's the start of it. And that feasibility study will also probably give me an estimate of how much it would cost to do a new, um, facility.
Okay.
So that's what, that's the start of that is for.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Walker. I'm always amazed every year about how much stuff you've got on your plate.
And let me just say, I cut out about five pages. No.
Um, but you do an amazing job. I have one question and I appreciate your mentioning it in the presentation. And that is with respect to the Jones Falls,
Mm-hmm.
um, water or sewer shed area. And I think I raised a question in the triennial review a couple of months ago, I think it was. And then even earlier last year in the annual review and maybe even during the, um, what's the other one? Basic Services Map Review. Um, and that is with respect to that particular sewer shed and, um, I know, I've been hearing about this for like ten years, that it's, it's not good, we can't, um, need to do something about it. And then, and then we had developers come in and propose decent projects for housing inside the, the, um, the zone and, um, and then they, you know, they get challenged and they go to the administrative law judge and then they get shot down because their opinion is there's not enough capacity. Um, so how do we reconcile that? Um, and I understand you said you had some things in the budget, uh, to address that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and are we beyond the studying phase and can we start implementing some of those things? And is there a specific line item for that?
So let me let my expert, because I'm not that engineer, let me let my expert come up and tell you how we go about. She's more day-to-day with it than I am.
I appreciate that.
Mm-hmm.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Lauren Buckler. I'm one of the deputy directors for Public Works and Transportation. Um, as far as the Jones Falls, we've done a lot of work in that area. So there's, there's different studies that are referenced by those for and those against development in that area. And that's kind of what you have to take a look at when you're looking at the data, is who is presenting the data and what are they, what light are they shining on that data?
Yeah.
So in, in the last ten years, we've done a huge, huge amount of work in that area. Some of it that is coming is structural rehabilitation, and that's one of the reports that keeps getting referenced. So that's one of the things that Director Walker made a point to say is that definitions matter. So structural rehabilitation is not capacity. So we have some structural concerns with the pipes near Lake Roland that we are working on a project that is moving towards construction to replace the structure, but it's not related to the capacity of the pipe. Separately, there are capacity issues much further up, um, closer to one of the developments that did get denied, that are concerns for DPWT. And DPWNT has made comments during the development process that until those specific sections of pipe are fixed, we can't have development area. So that has been part of the confusion because the ruling that came out on that specific development said they can't move forward. DPWT's recommendation had been they can't move forward until these pipe sections are fixed, which is still our recommendation. Those pipe sections need to be fixed for capacity in that very specific area, which is further upstream from Lake Roland. But the area by Lake Roland is a structural repair, not a capacity repair.
I, I appreciate the explanation. Um, is there money in the budget then to go ahead and start making those repairs?
Yes, there's money in the budget for those structural repairs. And then separately, you may have also heard, we have another consultant that's been doing a long-term study of what do we need to do in the next twenty years for that whole area? Because that whole sewer shed is one of the, the biggest sewer sheds that has undeveloped area in it. So if some of that area were to come onto development in the next twenty years, what needs to happen to that whole sewer shed? So that's that study. Um, we have drafts of it at this point from the consultant, but we haven't released the final version. We've been waiting on appendixes from them before that comes out publicly.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes, thank you. Um, so regarding the, um, collection centers, um, the Lansdowne Collection Center and the Cockeysville's Collection Center. I've gone to both. And so the Lansdowne is like the Motel Six and, uh, uh, Cockeysville's like the Crown Plaza. So when we talk about equity, how do you, are we addressing equity in trash disposal, recyclables? I mean, Cockeysville's got a paint shed, for heaven's sakes, that you can drop off paint. But, uh, the Hollins Ferry is the armpit of the collection centers. So how is that going to be addressed?
So I mentioned, um, that we did, um, a solid waste work group, um, in twenty twenty-one. So we have some recommendations that's in it, that, that came. So we have some recommendations that's in it, that, that came from that work group on how we start to deal with our municipal solid waste in the different locations. That one in Lansdowne is in a flood plain. So we, we typically don't do too much because I don't know why it was built there way back when. But we're trying to right-size our solid waste facilities. However, it's very expensive to right-size them. So we're being very strategic about what we deal with first and what we request funding for first in order to get our facilities where they need to be. They're all safe, and we're slowly doing upgrades. But space is also an issue in where we have these different facilities as well. So that is something that kind of keeps us up at night in terms of Lansdowne. And when it rains and floods, and it is, it's a hot mess. But there is a recommendation, but there's a cost associated with it. But it's working for us right now, and our bigger issue is what do we do with all this recycling? So I had to put that one in the forefront, I'm sorry.
Right, but it does seem like there should be some accommodation for the citizens in that area to recycle the same types of things at that facility that they're able to recycle without having to drive all the way to Cockeysville to recycle those things.
Right, it's, it's a space issue for us at that facility. It's a space issue and where we can put the trailers to be able to sort it. Because what happens is, we don't have space for a number of trailers to put the different items in different trailers. So that means it all ends up going in the trash. We can't have all of that going in the trash. So it's a query that we're trying to figure out the best way to deal with.
I can tell you a lot of it's not going in bothering to get to the trash. It's going on the roadside, being dumped on the west side. So thank you.
And I want to thank you for the traffic coming on Washington and Susquehanna. Hundreds of young people were crossing to get on a bus or get their cars. And that could possibly have saved some lights, lives. Because as you know, everybody wears the dark outfits walking across the street, and so we're very grateful. Number two, I know it's not just in Towson, but BG&E has been coming in and tearing up the roads. I've been, I know you've been working with them, I've been talking to them. Do they have any, what's the expectation from them to fix what they've torn up? Do they have the responsibility to bring it up to a certain level?
Right, they do have a responsibility to bring it up to a certain level. And off the top of my head, that's Tony. Is it to the middle of the street, is it the pipe?
Yeah, depending on how much they disturb is how much they restore.
Tony is our deputy for highways and transportation. So he deals with the, I know they're responsible for restoring a certain part, but I don't want to be wrong.
Yeah, they should be responsible to go to the center line. That's a new standard we have now. I know everybody's, you know, we hear a lot about, boy, they only paved half the road. But as you all know, in years past, what you would get is a 12-inch trench. We don't get that anymore. We get a whole lane if possible, or a whole intersection, or a whole section of that road that they disturbed replaced. So we've come a long way in the past 10 years in getting that, so you're not just seeing all these little trenches up the road.
And is there any time period that they have to fix it after they've done a getup for the first time?
There's really not a timeframe. What they're doing mostly when the big dig-ups like that is, everybody knows the high-pressure gas. And when they do the high-pressure gas, they got to go into individual businesses, they got to redo the meters, and they got, even when it's, in a neighborhood, it's even worse because they got to go into individual homes to change their meters out. And when they have to do that, you got to rely on people letting people in their home. So some things, I know down in Sudbrook Park, it took almost, it was like a two-year process just to get done, and them roads were absolutely horrible. But we try to do our best to keep on it, to keep on BG&E, and we work together as good partners in getting things completed.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that. And the other comment is about the grease. As, I don't know, we have over 94 restaurants in a one-mile radius here, and a lot of that came over the last five or six years. Is there any kind of information we could distribute to them? Because I presume that's where most of the issues are coming from. If there's something that we could get, we can make sure we get it out to the restaurants in the area.
We do, we have a pamphlet and we can make sure to get that.
Thank you so much, appreciate that. Word members, any other, Mr. Warren?
Lauren's going to tell you what she did.
So what we discovered after a couple backups on York Road, right in front of Towson Commons specifically, we mapped out what restaurants were going in. It's a number going into that. As you mentioned, there's a lot of restaurants in this very small area. And we worked with the Health Department to say, who have you been out to and who are you citing? COVID had shut a lot of restaurants down. So new staff, turnovers in staff. Some of them hadn't done anything with those grease traps when the Health Department went back in to the ones in that area. And, and a lot of it was just turnover in staff and stuff having been shut down. So we started monthly meetings between DPWT's Utilities Team and the Health Department, where we go through where we're having grease areas so then they can target their inspections in those areas so we can, you know, kind of double up on what's going on and hit two birds with one stone.
About 50 years ago, the county began zoning to control urban sprawl. Can you imagine what figures she'd be talking about today if we hadn't have started that at that time? The amount of infrastructure over the costing of citizens' county.
Any other questions or comments? If not, thank you so much, Ms. Walker. And from your staff, we greatly appreciate your time here this evening. If there are no other questions or comments, we will adjourn. Our next meeting of the Planning Board Committee will be on the capital improvement budget and program will be Tuesday, January 23 at 5:30 PM. This meeting will be held virtually. And then information for that meeting will be found on the Planning Board's website. Thank you all for attending tonight. Thank you, staff of the Planning Department. I know we have a lot of meetings this month, and I know you guys have a lot of work to do. We're thinking about you, and if we can help in any way, let us know. Thank you for the tenders. This meeting is hereby adjourned.
Good job, Ms.